I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our commission meeting this Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. Any public input on our agenda lineup today? If not, can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
Hold on, we need to remove the.
Oh, that's right. A motion to approve the agenda but removing number two from regular business is what I'm looking for.
Otten, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes, motion carries. Any public input on our consent agenda this morning? All right, can I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, Otten.
Thank you, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to our regular business, Terry, got a change order that you need?
Morning Commissioners, Terry Floyd, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. I have before you this morning, I have a change order in the amount of $12,574.12. This is for structure 244, 42, 244, 255, this is the Hudson Bridge. Again, this, the structure is almost, they're almost done with this, probably another couple of weeks. First item we need to have is granular material. It's unsuitable for compaction at the end of the bridges and the embankment, so we're, need to bring in some different backfill. And then there's also backfill material for down by the abutment piles, which was not good to put back in, so we had to get, replace that with some additional backfill material. And we had some strands on the pre-stress girders there, they had to be bent. So that's what the other part of the cost is, so.
All right, anybody have any questions for Terry?
I do, was this not taken into consideration when it was first bid? Or how does that work?
These items are, it's one of those, you don't know what you got until you get down there.
Right.
The type thing, I mean, and that's what it is for materials. And again, one of the reasons that, that we're doing this project is, this bridge was built 2006, 2008, something like that. And ever since it was new, we've been going down there, especially on the South Dakota side, we've been going down there to patch asphalt on the end, probably one to three feet from the, from the edge of the bridge where the abutment is. And that's been settling, we probably put in three, three, four inches of asphalt a year. So we've had some issues down underneath with materials, it's going somewhere. So again, when we dug it all up, you know, we found out, we end up replacing the abutment walls on both sides and then built a backup, of course, we need better material, make sure we have good material going back in there so we don't have those issues again, so.
Thanks, Terry.
Other questions? All right, any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second, Otten.
Thank you, got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landy?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Sheri.
Good morning, Sheri Lynn, Lincoln County Auditor. There are several things that are part of the agenda for the provisional budget, this is the introduction of the budget. What we need to do at the end of this is decide how we're going to do the budget work sessions. So there, the county needs two things to operate, first and foremost, they need the cash and they must have the available budget when they're spending. Budgets are not a perfect science and as we have seen, there have been supplements done to increase the budget authority. The department heads and the commissioners have, should have been working together since May 16th to review the numbers, so none of these numbers should be surprising. So attached to the agenda item, we have the proposed budget, or provisional, provisional budget, I'm sorry. The most important thing on this one is the last page where it's the means of finance. This shows where we are spending and where we're expecting revenues from. Within the budget, we, there are five new positions requested, three in the sheriff office, one in the jail and one new custodial position. With the budget that's been presented today, we have a 3% COLA increase, 2.5% step increase for non-bargaining unit options. For the contract for the FOP, there's a 3% COLA and a 2.5% step and for the highway, it's a 2% COLA and 2% step. Health insurance is being budgeted at 20%. I know it seems like it's kind of high, but I think when we talked, Tracy did her presentation back in March, that's kind of where we were landing, hopefully we'll get that number closer before September. This year for the budgets, I did split out a lot of the, for the vehicle request, if somebody has a vehicle request, I've put it on a new line somewhere in here, so under capital outlay, motor vehicle, you'll see where there's a request for the vehicles in there, I believe there's seven departments requesting vehicles. Two of them have not had vehicles before, one of them would be my office and one of them would be 4H. So that's kind of where the numbers come from, does anybody have any questions on those first couple items?
Are those, are those broke out in the provisional budget?
So the provisional budget is the overall, it shows the wages and the expenditures for the department and then when you come down, it shows where the revenues are going to come from to feed the expenditures. Then when you come to the next one, you've got the expense budget, it's only the expenses per department. So you'll see which each department has requested for each line item. After that, then I've got the revenue budget, so it's broken down by every line item for which the revenue is coming in at. And then we've got the overview, which we'll go over in a minute. With this budget though, we did have a 6.6 overall decrease in budget request. Couple of things that have made that happen is there are some retirements, so the personnel impact will be lower. The budget committee did do a review of some of the items and have adjusted where they're at, so for instance, the insurance used to have its own line item, but we put it now into the commission because otherwise we had $150,000 in insurance, $150,000 in fees and neither of them were really ever getting maxed out, so why not combine them? Let me see. We did a review on the outside agencies. Once everybody, all the presentations have been done for the outside agencies, the budget committee is going to go back and do a deep thorough review of what they've requested, what they're, where they're at and we'll do a recommendation before the final budget. The cash transfer was decreased by over $2 million and that is basically with the new way we're doing the reporting or the budgeting for the highway department, that kind of helps that out. Other things we're not doing is we're no longer budgeting for WIC department. And some of the other overall decreases would be, the debt for the courthouse was paid off, the airport is not planning as many projects, so those are some of the things that brought down that number. The revenue, we decreased by 7.6 and again, that one's, basically most of the revenue is reported or budgeted on average, average over three years. So again, when we, normally we do our budgets, we underestimate revenues, we overestimate expenditures and they usually come in that way. So before I get into the budget overview, did we have any questions on any of the budget revenue or expenditure reports that were presented?
Anybody have any questions? Guess not.
Okay, this is going to be easy then. All right, so for the budget overview.
That's the last document in our share file?
Yeah.
That you're looking at?
Yep. All right, so, again, the budgets are not a perfect science, there are three things that work together, the commission board, county auditor and elect official and department heads. All these things need to be done to make it a, a good budget to where we are making sure the needs of the citizens are being met. The timeline for the budget, January through April, we did the outside agencies. Today, we're doing the budget presentation, June 3rd, that's today. July 10th through July, or June 10th through July 1st, we should do budget work sessions. That'll give you an opportunity to discuss with department heads if you so choose to. July 8th will be the last regular commission meeting to approve opt-outs and then July 22nd, I'd like to adopt the provisional budget. As a reminder, adopting the provisional budget does not pass the provisional budget, it moves it so that I can advertise for it, then we can go to the hearing and, and then that's what we do in September, we have the public hearing in September and then what we've done historically is we've, any changes we make to the budget through, after that public hearing, then we come into the next meeting and we review it again and then September 23rd is the final adoption for the budget. This has been the request over the last few years, in '24, we had just under 28 million. '25, we had an approved budget of 29.3 and with the budget supplements we've done, that's gone up to now 30 million. And then 2026, the requests are coming in at 29.5. And as of the end of May, we have an increase of cash, basically, just not to be confused, a lot of that is because we've just collected, collected the taxes in April. This is the one report that I show every year where we look at the expenses to actual and the budgeted revenue to actual. You'll see that for '24, our budget was 28 million for expenses and they actually came in at 25. And the revenue was budgeted at 21 and it came in at 25. So the, when Michelle talked to you last week, we're, we're still doing the same trend as we've always done. This is, I don't know, I guess, the way most people do their budgets is they overestimate the expenditures, underestimate the revenues. So the general fund revenues, this is where they're broke down from, they've got tax, then this presentation is only on the general fund. We've got taxes, charges for goods and service, intergovernmental revenue, miscellaneous revenue, fines and forfeitures and license and permits. So we've got 24 million, 364, 778 for budget requests this year and you'll see that from 17 million and 25 to the 19 million for taxes, that's the growth and the preliminary, or the preliminary growth number and CPI. CPI is at 2.9 and I think it did growth at, growth at 4.5. And this is how it's actually looked over the last few years. So from, the taxes from 2019 to 2025 have increased by 45%. Lincoln County has not had growth under 4% though, since 2019. So I don't know that it's necessarily out of line where our taxes, tax increases come from and that this report here will show how that's kind of flowed through. Licensing and permits, we tip, you know, we're budgeting for $200,000 for licensing and permits, for land use permits, 2024 actual came in at 296. But I think Toby just tries to be conservative and I'm not going to speak too much on anybody's individual budget because they will have the ability to discuss that with you. But the total license and permits and these garbage hauler license, marriage license, highway permits, floodplain development and county fees, they've got it budgeted at 251,873. It's a decrease from the 2025 budget, obviously it's because we're doing the averaging. Intergovernmental revenue, those are bank franchise, other intergovernmental revenue, the liquor tax reversion, telecom tax, the FTA grant, motor vehicle, veteran service state share and law enforcement grants. So that's where they're coming in at. Charges for goods and services, these are the fees that we charge out that we don't tax for. And fines and forfeitures. Miscellaneous revenue, the miscellaneous revenue, we kind of, that one is usually iffy because, not, I don't mean iffy, but when, this is where we would put the sale of the assets, so when you look at '24 and you got sell of county property, 624,000, that was the highway shop on 18 that we sold. General fund expenditures, so you'll see that 2025, we had budgeted 30 million and now this year we're down 29, 29.5. This again is the means of finance. So with this, we have 7, $7 million cash applied, however, of that number, we've got this mandatory 1.4 million, so it actually brings it at about 5 for the cash applied. And then this is kind of where, all the different funds will get their money from. Any questions? I know I went kind of fast because I know that we're going to have budget work sessions to go more into depth over it. But if you have any questions on the information I presented, I'd be happy to go over it with you.
Anybody have any questions for Sheri?
Sheri, what will this, Governor Roden sign this SB 216 into law with regard to property taxes? Kind of impact is that going to have on our property tax revenue?
So what it's going to do here is where we're able to increase it by the 4.5, that will be a flat 3 because I'll guarantee you that we're going to continue to be over 4.5. So instead of having a 7.4% increase in our property tax, we're only going to have, well, if it was this year, it'd be 5.9.
Thank you.
I think I, when I looked at it, if I based it on this year, when I looked at it, I think it was like $260,000 where we wouldn't be able to, if, if it was based on 2026.
Thank you.
Other questions for Sheri?
I like that, okay, so now, what we need to do is, kind of what do you want to do with the budget work sessions? Do you want to coordinate with Paul and figure out which department you want to bring in? How do we want to move forward?
That makes sense to me.
Just coordinate with Paul and then set up budget.
So how many weeks do we have?
We, well, what I'd like to do is do it June 10th through July 1st because that way, if you guys decide that you want to do an opt-out, Roden Bridge or other general fund opt-out, that you would have those full discussions and disclosures prior to that.
Because that deadline is the 15th of July, right?
Yeah, and July 8th is our regular scheduled meeting, now, does it prevent you from doing a special meeting on the 15th? Nope, but July 8th would be our last regular scheduled meeting prior to that. So I don't know if there's some kind of basis you want to see or if you guys just want to amongst yourselves, figure out who you want to see and then work that through and have Paul get them on the agenda or.
So we've got how many meetings, actual regular meetings then, between now and then?
Is it three?
1024 first.
That makes sense, divide them up and bring them in for our regular meetings.
Okay. Help with a quarter, doesn't matter, just, you want to see everybody, have everybody?
You know, I'm not going to micromanage department heads, if they want to come in, they can come in, if they, unless, I don't know what everybody else thinks, do you want everybody to come in? Some of them, there really isn't much on them.
Yeah, like, for mine, for instance, you know, my biggest swing in mine is going to be buying the vehicle. So if you guys want me to come in and talk about why I think I need a vehicle, then I can do that, if you, you know, and if you look.
I think folks that want to have those extra thing, you know, the added vehicles or the, if there's any FTEs or whatever being requested, I think those folks should come in.
Yeah, because if you go down through this, the expenditure, you can see every budget, what the percentage change is. Like for the commissioners, there was a 20% decrease. You know, then, let's, we're not going to talk about elections because that's an obvious one, why it's gone up 657% because we're going to have an election. But then judicial, you know, 15.65. The auditor, mine again is because of the vehicle request, which I'm happy to come in and talk about, but then we got like the treasurer, 6.2. So do you have, do you want to base it on that number or? I know historically, it's usually been like if it was X amount of a swing, but what is the swing?
I think, did we use, did we use 3% the last?
We did.
As of, if it was fewer, 3% over?
Yeah.
I don't know, thoughts from the board?
I think I'd like to hear from departments that want new FTEs, new vehicles, new equipment, major projects, creates the kind of transparency I think folks are looking for.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, if we just do a flat, hey, it's, you know, if you're 3% over what you are last year, maybe.
Probably a lot of people are going to hit that because we, we are inflationary budgeting and that 3%, basically, you know, some of them are going to be like, if you look at registered deeds, 6%, but that's mainly in her personnel.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Aaron's, I think those larger expenses and we haven't had any talks about a Roden Bridge levy and I know we're working on the safer streets for all project and we'll be getting a report on that, so I don't know, maybe that's a next year discussion, but.
So if we take and we look at their, anything but their personnel services and they've got a high number, then maybe do that first because that's obviously going to show like mine, most of mine is coming from that vehicle. So take out the personnel and do a, whatever if they've got a major purchase, okay.
Have we heard anything back on that traffic study for the Justice Center? Like, do we have any idea if the state's going to make us do anything crazy on that intersection?
And we will, we will be having discussions. You know, we talked last year about how we were going to handle PDO, so we're going to have discussions, a presentation on the recommendation for moving forward on that. So yes, as nice as this budget looks, we're not anywhere close to where we're going to end up being, probably.
And I do need to get those numbers from you while I'm thinking about it, on the PDO.
Yep.
For what we're spending right now.
Yep, are you, yep.
When do you think that presentation is going to happen?
I think we're talking Monday, we're going to get some involved parties together and see, because we've discussed one option, now we're going to discuss another option. So I think probably by the end of the month, we could probably safely have something together.
There's a group of which I was, I'm a part, we're looking at work, there's some different options on the table and I just got an email from Commissioner Kipley in Minnehaha County and wanting to look at those numbers a little harder to see if anything like that even is a possibility and what they're proposing, but.
Yeah, I would say by the end of the month, we can probably have something pulled together, good idea of where we think it should go, not necessarily, I don't know. You're going to end up spending money no matter what, so I just, I hate to say it, but that one's one we are not going to get away from.
Any other questions for Sheri?
I do, Commissioner Schmidt was talking about that the summer picnic and the Christmas parties were going to come out of the commissioner's budget. I don't see that here, where would that have been added?
Did you tell Paul to add it on there?
I'm not Commissioner Schmidt, so.
It was, I thought it was in the HR budget.
I thought it was in the HR budget also.
And Schmidt said it shouldn't be there.
Well, I mean, it's all general fund.
I know.
Right, it's in the HR budget right now.
It is currently, it's just taken out for next year.
Well, then it needs to go to the commission budget. It doesn't matter to me what budget it comes out of, I guess it's.
Okay, so what we've got here in, we've got $150,000 in fees and contracts. In there, I think it's probably $30,000 for, that I know of, that I know of, $30,000 for the audit and then probably 24, $25,000 for insurance. So we're 50,000, you still have $100,000, I think we can do the picnic with that.
Or we could give it back to the taxpayers too, couldn't we?
You could. You could.
I will say that that went very far toward employee morale and
Absolutely.
It was really a, a good thing and they were very appreciative and it got, it was nice to be able to sit down with other, you know, the guys that are, guys and gals that are out working on the roads and stuff and a different atmosphere and I know they really appreciate it. I think that is, goes a long way toward maintaining our employee, retaining employees just in general, so I think it absolutely is worth it. We know my feelings on the birthday cards, but. Okay.
All right, so we have a plan going forward and then over the next three meetings, set up the department heads that have at least a request for new employees or new capital, or capital outlay object and then anybody else that's got an outlier. Okay?
Yes, sounds good. Any public input on Sheri's presentation?
Sheri, I just have quick questions.
If you have a question, you can probably go talk to her about it because we're not answering questions during public comment.
Well, I just wonder about the, from 19 to 25, about the, we have not had over 4% growth. That seems.
Not under 4%.
Not under 4%, thank you, that was my clarification.
I probably didn't say that.
You said it, you said it right. Any other public comment on this agenda item? All right, if not, we'll move on to our Compass Center presentation. Good morning, Paul.
Good morning, I'm just going to refresh this quick. So, all right, so Paul Anderson, Commission Admin Assistant. We, again, continuing our presentations from the outside agencies, we have staff from the Compass Center. The 2025 request was $45,000 and the 2026 request was $55,000 and they will have a handout, but I would also have it here for them. And then his staff would like to come up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Sydney Bartunick, I'm the Chief Development and Communications Officer at the Compass Center.
I'm Nicole Olvera, I'm the Director of Operations at the Compass Center.
And so we're here to give you a little bit more information about the Compass Center and our recent restructure, it's a strategic restructure into specialized teams as of May 5th. And so here you'll see the new team structure, if you're familiar with the Compass Center, again, working on navigating the journey to healing, but in this, in this team approach, we are focused on three teams, adult services, youth and family services and prevention education. We have moved into a crisis care model, whereas previously, we have supported victims of domestic violence, sexual assault and child abuse through crisis care and long-term healing. Whereas now, we are really focused in on that crisis care, that means that in the adult service team, two things to highlight there are, are sexual assault advocates, those are the people that are part-time, we have 10 on staff right now and hiring more, but they're responding 24/7 to victims in hospital settings and law enforcement settings and really those frontline people for our mission. The other people to mention. The other people to mention here on staff are our crisis care navigators. We have three that are responding during our walk-in hours. Our walk-in hours have shifted to Monday through Thursday, and we're closed on Fridays, but these crisis care navigators are the first people that answer our phones, they support people through an assessment, and really our goal here is to be at a zero waitlist. We have consistently had 50 to 60 people on our waitlist, and so moving into crisis care, we are really working to look towards a zero waitlist. With our youth and family services team, those are our team members that are meeting with the most, the youngest people that we're seeing, as young as three, and historically those are our little navigators, therapists. So we have four on staff right now. They have moved to see clients in-house, and then they are still going to the centers, our partnership with MB and Boys and Girls Club. And then, of course, our prevention education arm is still here. We have our youth voices in prevention work that aims to eliminate dating violence among middle school and high school youth, as well as Move to Heal South Dakota, which is a movement-based program that comes alongside underserved youth to help them heal through movement. A couple other things that we'd highlight here, just at the, at the top of the application is that 188 Lincoln County residents projected to be served in 2026 is crisis, or crisis care services, that doesn't include prevention education projections in that number. The math is about 14% of our clients are from Lincoln County, and the ask today is about 4% of our overall revenue. We really believe that Lincoln County is helping support the prevention of system overloads and supporting families, as well as building prevention capacity and strengthening partnerships. On the second page, it goes into a little bit more about how we are really looking towards prevention and not duplication. So here, really just focusing on our specialized team approach, preventing costly emergency interventions and strengthening existing county systems, placing an emphasis on trauma-informed advocacy and ongoing victim support, which is leading to victim participation, increased victim participation in legal proceedings and improved case resolution rates. And then, of course, our system cost savings. Specialized trauma services at the Compass Center are helping to prevent the need for repeated emergency interventions and reducing that long-term cost. Again, going through more in-depth on the right-hand side, we can speak to the law enforcement support through the 24/7 crisis response, as well as highlighting our prosecution support. We know that our crisis care navigators have more capacity to have those conversations repeatedly with victims. That really helps them, in that line item right there, provide ongoing case communication, just to help them, victims understand legal proceedings and build trust, ultimately leading to a stronger case. And then a couple more points here, the medical system support, our crisis care navigator's really coming alongside to provide that immediate support to the same, during same exams, and yeah, just wrapping up with that educational support, which is a smaller ask in this overall ask, but really providing, again, prevention programming, professional training options in the community, and family stabilization services. So that's a very quick overview, but we're open for questions and.
Anybody have questions for Cindy or Nicole?
Thank you for being here today. Appreciate your time. I see here your number is 188 Lincoln County residents projected to be served in '26. Just a couple of questions. Do you know how many were served last year?
Yes, I do have it. I'm not sure how to navigate this, but in the application, I took a screenshot so I can remember. 162.
And then of those 162, because you offer a variety of services, do you know what the breakdown is of, how many of those people utilized a service where they provided like healthcare insurance, as opposed to, you know, being one of the services that, you know, you provide that obviously doesn't charge or have healthcare? And the reason I ask this is, in my law practice, I run into a number of Compass Center cases and involvement, and children receiving counseling and things like that, so I'm wondering of this breakdown of like this 188, you know, how many are like fee-paying clients?
We don't charge or charge insurance for any of our client or victim services, and so we don't track anybody, like whether someone has insurance or would be able to go seek that service elsewhere. We just provide these services at no cost to victims. It's not historically data that we would track, just all services are free and, yeah.
So there's like no litmus test then? Like if somebody comes in and they, like, let's say they're, they're wealthy, they make a lot of money, you still provide the service for free?
Yes. We generally operate under a feeling of they're victims, and so they shouldn't have to pay for the care that they are receiving in crisis for that.
In the new model, we have a crisis care assessment. It's the CAT and ACAT for adults versus youth, and so if they go through the assessment, they're deemed in crisis, and then if they're re-victimised, they're still in crisis, so the services stay on as free to the victim.
Do you ever, do you ever track or keep any historical data on, you know, somebody, like especially with some of these, what I'm very concerned about is child victims. And what I see a lot in my law practice is sometimes there's allegations that turn out not to be true, and they get weaponized against people. Do you ever keep any data that tracks the outcome of court cases, you know, where something maybe turned out to be not true that was alleged?
We keep track of court cases in regards to the protection orders that we help individuals write, but we don't necessarily have historical data on if a child was involved with a parental, with domestic violence or something to that effect, whether or not that was deemed to be successful in the case.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Do you guys have anything to do with mental illness in adults?
Can you clarify what you mean?
Well, like somebody that maybe just has mental illnesses and needs something, I guess.
We may help with that individual. We base it off of the, whether or not they meet the criteria of being a victim of sexual, domestic, relational violence, and then if they meet that, that crisis criteria, that we're doing that review with those individuals when they come to seek our services. And so some of those individuals that are needing mental health services or mental illness, we may see some of those individuals, but that's not like a specific segment of individuals that we serve. Did that answer your question?
So this is basically all just domestic violence and?
Yeah, victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, or child abuse. There are some human trafficking cases that we see as well, but we work with referral partners for deeper case management that we don't offer, but those are the primary survivors and victims we see.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public input on the presentation? All right, if not, we'll move on to our next item.
Paul Anderson, Commission Admin Assistant. Again, this time we have staff from the Rural Office of Community Service. This is broken down into two separate pieces. They have a transit piece, which provides transportation, and a dining piece, which provides meals. You can see here in the facts of vetting, the transit piece in '25 was $12,000, and '26, $15,000. The dining went from $6,019 to $4,620. Whoever, you guys can come up at the same time, too.
Hello, I'm Andrea Irwin. I'm with The Rock Transit Service. We provide transit, transit availability for the general public in all of Lincoln County. That includes the use of wheelchair-accessible vehicles to handle any of the handicap needs that come our way. This is Kayleen Gearing. She has, she is the Director for our Dining Services here in Canton.
Oh, you want me to go first?
Yeah, good.
I brought with me today just some total meal counts, just to kind of show you how important this, this service is in this area. In 2024, there was anywhere, the lowest is 815 meals to over 1,000 meals per month. We are on about that same trend for 2025. In May, we have 842 meals that were served. We, we do not make anybody pay, we ask a suggested donation of $5. That's for anybody over 60, and then anybody under 60 would ask, be asked to pay a price of $8. So whether they pay or not, we will serve them a meal. This takes place at the senior center. The cook just retired in April, so we have a new cook there. We've had some changes come down from the state, so we are working hard to make sure we have everything operating as it should.
The transit service is actually located here in Canton, but they do service anybody in the entire Lincoln County area, as it fits by their schedule. We're demand response, so we ask that schedules are made in advance, and a schedule is made around that. We were running three vehicles and three drivers pretty steady most of the year. We did just find the need to accommodate more out-of-town transportation and hired another part-time driver who will be available with a wheelchair-accessible vehicle to accommodate those looking to get out of town. That seems to be a lot harder of an issue right now, and people are having a hard time getting to specialists and doctor's appointments and other things in the Sioux Falls area. Last year, we serviced, we did 14,668 rides in Lincoln County. This year, with five months still left to go, we're already at over 11,000 rides, so I do see that number increasing, if not staying pretty steady. As costs continue to go up, it's getting harder for people to maintain or purchase their own vehicles. We rely on our federal and state funding for our transportation costs, but that funding is never 100%. So as, you know, operation costs, salaries, and maintenance on vehicles, fuel, that kind of thing keeps going up, we're looking at ways to try and offset that. Part of what DOT has us do is they have us reach out to our cities and counties for a local match request, and with that, we know that even that is sometimes tough to do, so we do look at other options. We're working with a company right now that is looking at advertising options, to place advertising on our vehicles, which will help offset those revenues, and we're also looking at more fundraising opportunities to help cover those increasing costs.
Anybody, are you finished? Does anybody have any questions?
I do. On your meals, your projected goes down?
It did go down, yes.
A lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, last year for us was a 16-month year, because they wanted to change my fiscal year from June, it was June to May, and they wanted to get us caught up and change it from October to September. So there was more meals projected due to the extra four months in the year.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank you for coming down today.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
You bet, thank you. Is there any public input on the presentation? All right, then we'll go ahead and move on to the next presentation, with Sioux Metro Growth.
Madam Chair, it looks like Paul's going to let me go on my own, if I may, Madam Chair.
You're just, you're just fine.
Yeah, Bryce knows what he's doing, he's been in front before, but Bryce is here representing Sioux Metro Growth Alliance Economic Development. Used to be Lakita and Makita that were merged. 2025 requests $7,500, 2026 requests the same.
Thank you, Paul. Now that he's taken away most of my steam, if I may, Madam Chair, I'm going to hand out just briefly some additional information for reference. And again, thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you this morning. As Paul did aforementioned, Lincoln County has been a member of Lakita/Makita since 1997, was reorganized a few years ago. Sioux Metro Growth Alliance represents, as you see in the packet, most every municipality in the Lincoln County area. We also have what we call enhanced development contracts in two, possibly as of last night's action, three communities of Harrisburg in Lenox and soon to be T, which offers where our staff spends a little more time, full to part-time, working with those communities on their economic development activities. Some specific examples of what Sioux Metro Growth Alliance has done within Lincoln County itself has been expanding housing opportunities in both Lenox, Canton, and Harrisburg, South Dakota. Those are long-term, they're not an easy in some of our rural communities, so we spend expansive, expansive time on some of those. In Lenox specifically, though, for example, there have been four new retail businesses and over half a million dollars in home over improvements that have expanded in Harris, or in Lenox, I'm sorry, in the last year because of the work that Sioux Metro Growth does. We also are working actively within the county of Lincoln County to work with potential developments and landowners, always with, and I'm going to say this more than once, but with, because I was here last week, always with the idea and the importance of knowing what the land use map and the current zoning are and look like in Lincoln County. We are consistently working to build relationships within Lincoln County with those communities to promote those communities that we represent, as you see in the documents that have been handed out. We often act as the public relations, government affairs, and marketing arm for our member communities. About a third of the dues for Sioux Metro Growth Alliance come from municipalities, a third through our member relations group, banks, industry leaders. We have monthly interactions with business and community leaders that showcase Lincoln County. Later this late summer, early fall, will be the Southern Tour of Sioux Metro Growth Association that'll tour Lincoln County. We just had one in Minnehaha County. A couple of comments were made, though, that really piqued my interest this morning, which is one of the things that we've worked on extensively in the last few months. We're all aware of, I think just this week earlier, it was suggested, or who was going to be on the property tax discussion for the state. We know that there's a property tax reset discussion about property taxes. Sioux Metro Growth Alliance is very committed to recognizing that our communities, which are 19 and growing, so there's four counties and about 19 municipalities that are represented by us, we understand that the legislative movements affect every community differently in this state. Lincoln County happens to be the county that is probably most affected by some proposals. We are committed to being at the table to make sure that our communities are represented, to the extent that Sioux Metro is the lead on making sure that T and Harrisburg. To the extent that Sioux Metro is the lead on making sure that T and Harrisburg specifically, because those are the two largest growing communities, not just in Lincoln County, but in the state, that it's well-understood the effects that could be out there because of the proposed legislation in the task force that's at hand. Setting arbitrary growth figure for these communities is difficult and really has some long-term effects. So Sioux Metro Growth Alliance has commissioned, and we are working with those communities who are within Lincoln County and Minnehaha County, is, as we say, our little brother to the north. We have to work with our little brother to the north occasionally to make sure that we're at the table, so that everybody that is making decisions for you all sitting at this dais understand the impacts and effects that it has. And that's probably one of the most important things that we've undertaken in the most recent months, is making sure that state leaders understand, from my perspective, a detrimental effect of what a broad-based plan would be. So with that being said, do want to make sure that you know that any economic development work that Sioux Metro Growth entertains and takes on in Lincoln County is always cognizant of the land use map and the local counting and zoning ordinances that are in effect within Lincoln County. We respect that. We, that's our guiding principle of how we move forward, that we respect local municipalities and county governments in that role. And I will stand by for any questions if I did not answer anything.
Anybody have any questions for Bryce? Guess you're off the hook. Thanks, Bryce.
Thank you.
Is there any public input on the presentation? All right, if not, we'll keep moving. Now is our opportunity for public comment for items not on our agenda. Anybody wanna come up and give any public comment? All right, not today. Any Commissioner reports?
Madam Chair, I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
I think that Paul's gonna put one up. It was the meeting that you and I, I don't know if any of the other ones were on that Action Plan Meeting on 5/29, but this, this really stood out to me. It was the High Injury Network that it showed that sixty-five percent of severe collisions were on two percent of our roadwork network. And I thought that was, so he's gonna put it up and show it's very much towards the northern part of our county. It created, it was created from fifty-eight, eighteen non-interstate collisions and included a hundred and one severe collisions. And when we were on, it was a Teams meeting, and so I know that Commissioner Landine and I were on that. But this is, you, I think, referred to that before about the safety meeting that was coming up, so, that we're doing. And if you haven't taken that survey on, on the roads, it's on our website.
It is. You can, you can go to the website and do the survey. You can, there, there's questions that you can answer, and you can rank your concerns on the survey, and then you can also drop, there's an interactive map that you can drop points on and make comments about them, and they are still collecting information on those for their final report, so.
I can pull that up here if you wanna show people, too.
Yeah, if you wanna show people, go ahead.
The link is right here. You can go click on that.
Can you go back? Where did you find the link?
Yep, this is our homepage, and then if you scroll down to News and Highlights,
Okay.
it's set at the first position. It'll pretty much always be there for a while. And then that just takes you to the information page with the news splash. And if you click on this link, it'll take you to the specific page where you can fill out the survey. And like, like you guys were saying, you can fill out the survey and add your thoughts, add markers to the map. It's very similar to the process for when we were putting together the comprehensive plan as well. And this will have a detailed timeline and all the information about the Safe Streets for All project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, any other reports today? All right, Drew, do we need executive session? Harry, can I get a motion to go into executive session? What statute subsection?
It'd be 125, 2, sub-3.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second, Otten.
Got a motion and a second. We call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second, Otten.
Thank you. Elise, show me a caller roll. Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine? Yes. And a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second, Otten.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I, I said aye. I didn't say aye, but I am now. Aye. All opposed? Any opposed? Same sign? All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a great week.